Meeting board.
Good evening.
We're gonna open the meeting at 7:15. Today is October 28, 2021. And we're gonna start. Have everybody stand up, if you please, please.
My pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna discuss Borrego fence installation and plantings and basins.
Everybody see the draft letter input together?
Yes.
Yeah.
Looks pretty good.
Have you all had a chance to look at it?
Yeah. I just made it smaller.
I mean, the fence you can see through. Even if you're standing at the road, you can see right through the fence. It isn't coming anywhere near its original purpose. It's intended purpose.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
So they just need to replace that or re-weave it or something, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
At some point, a little bit of see-through, it's okay. You can see, but not that much. It's almost.
It's almost transparent. You can look at the trees on the other side of the hill.
What I like is it gives you the purity when you're, if you're walking by, you can see that you can't go further than that. You should not be able to see the ray.
Right, yeah.
And, but it's way too transparent. We call it, that's like, maybe 80% transparency?
Probably.
You want at least...
You can see the other side of the fence here.
All it is is a green, green, screen fence. Well, it's not even screened. It's a green chain-link fence.
Yeah.
No screening.
Alright, so, is that what it is?
Yeah, it's a green chain-link fence.
Hold on, I thought it was a green, it doesn't have like things going through it? You know what I think?
Yeah, that's a little, but they're very narrow and...
I don't think it's, it does though. It might be just...
It has green plastic going through the thing, but it's...
I guess whatever it is, it's insufficient, right?
It's not enough.
Yeah. It might be just a green chain-link fence.
Yeah.
Okay, well, whatever is there is inappropriate. It doesn't do what we said it needed to do. So, okay, so that part of the water, they need to replace it, find a solution or remedy the situation, make sure it's not transparent, some sort of solid weave, something else to meet the purpose, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that one's done. And on Borrego, I just stating that we had, you know, two occasions. We observed water beyond a 72-hour drainage requirement. Gave the specifics from what Derek had, the stormwater handbook requirement and to drain within 72 hours. And that has been in effect since 1996, so it should be nothing new to anybody. And the drainage issue is that the basin must be redesigned to meet the stormwater. That's as simple as it is.
Yeah, they gotta pull that liner out.
Yeah.
Basically turned it into a swimming pool instead of a basin.
And this is what we've been learning from conservation, you know, when they do the testing. And they dig in to see how, how far is the level of the water under the ground? Because these basins have to be designed at two feet above that level. When that testing is not appropriate, you know, the bottom of the basin could be very close to that. And that brings, you know, the water will never leave because it's right there. And we need that water to be out in 72 hours so it doesn't, you know, become the zoo.
Do we wanna give them a deadline?
Well, you can't give them a deadline on the basin because that's gonna take redesigning and it may be weather-dependent. Because they're gonna have to pull that lining out. And the reason why they put that lining in is because they didn't do the clay. They usually would do the clay basin.
Yep.
And instead, they tried using the lining, but they admitted that they ran the lining underneath. So it's actually sitting underneath that area. That's why it's not draining and it's just pooling there. Because it's not gonna drain. So they have to pull that whole lining out.
Or fill it.
Or cut it. They might be able to just, easy enough, just dig up that section and cut the lining and trim it, if they can.
Okay. As soon as feasibly possible.
Yeah. For convenience, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, they don't do it. They don't get it.
Yeah, I don't know that I've worked on it because they're trying to sell it anyway, so if they sit on it.
That's their problem.
They've been sitting on a lot of stuff anyways because look how long it took them to do the fence.
Yeah.
The screening.
That's true.
You know, they weren't really rushing.
Alright, any photos?
Yep.
I mean, I don't know how they could say, geez, no.
Well, you can see the solar panel right through, right through the fence. You can't deny it.
In one of the meetings, I remember he mentioned that kind of fence and I said, "Not that one. You can see through." And they put that one. So I kinda like told him, "Not that kind of fence."
He said, "Not a solid fence."
Yeah.
So in the middle, I thought we said a solid weave.
Yeah. I think his worry was, is it would catch the wind.
Right.
And he didn't want it catching the wind because it would pull the fence down and they'd have issues with it. But you see those fences with this privacy screening through it all the time and they're not falling down.
Yeah.
You know, wind's not just taking those things down, so...
I mean, if there's wind that's gonna...
And if you put a post in the ground deep enough, you don't have to worry about it.
They're experts pinning things down and anchoring the panels, so they know how to do it.
It's just, I think they just make excuses.
So are you gonna respond to, I think it was Charlie's email?
Uh, yeah, I'll draft this up a little more and then I'll just respond to his email.
Okay. Just copy everybody on it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Please send them a PDF app so that you can manipulate our document.
Yeah.
Actually, would you, just make sure you send it to Jill and let Jill send it to Charlie.
Okay.
Yeah, but final?
I will after I change it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll send this to you. Probably won't be till February Wednesday.
And then that email that Charlie sent?
Yeah, I didn't see. Was that recent?
Two weeks ago, maybe?
That one, about asking about the final section.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, just reply all to that. That should be fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Easy enough?
Yeah.
Then the plantings? Plantings?
Plantings seemed okay.
Trees?
Yeah, I mean, the ones by the gate, let me just find them again. Ones by the gate look like they were eight feet tall. Which seemed...
They're just gonna get bigger.
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna hide everything. When the leaves fall now, you know, the bottom third of the ray is gonna be visible. But, yeah, I mean, they're probably eight, maybe 10 feet tall.
Yeah, but I thought those are evergreens, so their leaves aren't gonna fall off.
No, but I mean, all the stuff to the other side.
Yes, on the side.
The ones near the road, come on. The ones near the road are... Wrong way. I mean, the ones near the road are like six-foot half of these. Overall, I mean, I think they're sufficient.
Every time I drive by, it's too dark for me to tell. I have to go by there during the day.
Ed, can you mention that we have to be clear how many they planted? And maybe with pictures? And within a year, if they die, they have to replace it?
Sure. That I can do.
They're not gonna care in a year.
I know.
They might not even own it then.
Oh, no, they probably won't.
No, probably not.
As soon as they can.
Yeah. We gotta fix that basin before they go selling anything, eh?
Okay. I can do that.
But at least we mention it, you know, we do our job.
Okay. And generally, the plantings need to be, they need to make it, what, through the first year, right? So after they get their occupancy permit, probably?
Probably. Okay, I can take care of that. Get it to Jill probably Wednesday. One?
One.
So, Co-Part?
Can somebody open that up?
I would just leave the discussion.
Yeah. So in our next step is meeting workshop to discuss special permit number 296 and cycling number 63 for Co-Part of Connecticut Inc.
So, I will, I can start off. First of all, everything, and I've been racking my brain about this project. I like the idea of the business in town. I wanna see business grow. The problem I have is, I feel like this particular business could cause harm to others in the area. As far as environmental-wise, there's been a lot of secretive discussions, I would say, about what's going on on the original site and the contamination. And how we were told several times, "There's no leaks. There's no leaks. Nothing's leaking on the property." When we went up there, we looked, we seen several leaks. The way we basically were hounded by the attorney for Co-Part, going through each leak, everything we seen, documenting what we were looking at too. It was almost like they weren't giving us the freedom and they didn't want us to look at that. They wanted us to look at the undisturbed soil and that's what they're focusing on. And every time we brought up issues with the original site, that it's, well, that's not a, that's not what we're talking about. You know, they keep it to the site that's not been disturbed. When you're testing the soil and all that stuff, I'm hoping they're not finding stuff in the area that hasn't been disturbed yet. I'm more curious about what's going on on the original site and having wells dug around that area. And whether it's the town putting them on along the road there to detect type of contamination that might be coming down from the hill. I just don't want it getting into the river. And I'm very concerned about that and I don't wanna have another Reed Street where we approve something and all of a sudden the residents' wells are getting contaminated. There's more runoff into the river, you know, from contaminants. I, once it's been done, you can't take it back. You know, it's gonna be very hard for us to clean that up once it gets done. And it, this particular project is not a shell-approved project. It's not like a solar field back in the day where we had to approve them. This is something that they wanna expand on. They're looking at expanding. But I don't see a benefit to the town. I actually see it more of a bad thing for the town overall because I think we're gonna have to deal with contamination. It's, there's no way around it. I'm very concerned on what's going on on the original site and I hate the fact that they're being secretive about it. I really wanna know what's up in that soil. And, you know, the fact, well, we tested a well off-site, a neighbor's well, you know, on an adjacent property that not actually on that property, and that came up fine. Well, that's one well in a neighborhood. I'd like to see test pits, test wells done along the bottom down there and have those monitored. And typically, when you're monitoring those, it's gonna be for extended period of time. You know, they're gonna monitor them for years, not a week. You know, I think much more testing needs to go on down there and I don't wanna end up in another Reed Street. The other thing I have an issue with is the hours. Okay, we've heard from countless residents about how their trucks are affecting them, being outside, you know, outside their properties, dropping things off the tow trucks, almost running people off the roads, just all kinds of things that we've heard. And I don't think increasing that is gonna be good for our residents. The hours of operation, you know, they're unchecked. They don't wanna put them in check. They didn't even wanna work with us on that. They, it's not even a factor. So they don't even wanna discuss the hours of operation. I personally think there should be hours of operation for the whole project where it's core hours. They're not allowed to take in any vehicles at a certain time and after a certain time, that's it. They're shut down. No more vehicles. They should be doing their operation during the daytime. It's a small-town rural community. And having these large vehicles, car haulers and a variety of things coming through small residential roads is not what people sign up for. And I think we're doing an injustice to the public by allowing that to increase. You know, we mentioned, I mentioned, doing hours and Co-Part was adamant about not doing that. That's not even on the table. They need to be able to operate all times in the night to be able to get their vehicles. If there's an accident, we've already determined, if there's an accident, it doesn't matter because it doesn't go to their site after an accident. It goes to wherever they have, like, say Boulevard. It sits on Boulevard's property, then Boulevard transports them, you know? It's not like they're taking it right from the Pike and bringing it right to Co-Part and they have to do that. So there's no reason why the hours of operation can't be a fixed timeframe other than the fact that they don't wanna cooperate with that. So the lack of cooperation with things that we've had as far as, you know, trying to meet the needs of the neighbors, the possible contamination of wells and the river from contaminants that might be coming off that site. On this whole project, I don't feel good about it and I'm, I'll tell you right now, I'm gonna be a definite no on this project. I cannot in good conscience approve this project. I think it's gonna cause us problems later on in the future, once it's approved. And I don't wanna see residents go through that and I don't wanna see residents moving out of our town because they just don't wanna deal with this anymore. You know, people move to our town to have that small-town community feeling and they're not getting that anymore. You know, we're not, Warren should not be a junkyard. Warren's farming community, you know, hard-working, middle-class people trying to earn a living. Not, not a junkyard. I think we seen all the opposition of the previous one that wanted to go in and they were pretty good. They pulled out. They said, "You know something? Your town doesn't want it. We'll move on." And they moved on. You know, I just don't see an expansion is gonna benefit the town in any way. And if anything, we're gonna be doing cleanup for it for many years to come. You know, again, I'm a no on this thing.
David, you mentioned Reed Street. Can you just do a brief thing so people know what happened?
Reed Street was happening with, basically, a property owner was storing vehicles and things, equipment up there and dumping materials directly into the ground. Didn't mitigate any of it properly and now the residents are, have contamination in their wells because of it. Because, yes, it may be in this area for five, 10 years, but 20, 30, 40 years down the line, that became massive now and it's beyond our ability to control. Now, residents that built and bought houses up there, they're suffering because of that. The town does not have a budget to run a public water line up to these rural communities. They operate off of well water. We cannot run, we can barely maintain our lines now for the town. Never mind running new lines miles out of the center of the town. And basically, when somebody's well gets contaminated, like that, they're, they're having to foot that expense, putting special treatment systems for their water to try to clean it up. You know, they may never be able to drink water out of that well and use it only for bathing purposes only and have to drink bottled water or have, you know, water brought in. That's a burden, especially on a new homeowner.
I heard people can't even sell their house because the bank wants...
Yes.
Yeah.
But I also, I think that the contamination up there is not so much from the vehicles as it is actual drums of chemicals that were there. The vehicles probably are coincidental, but there was a lot of contaminated drums that were rusting and the stuff was released into the soil.
Chemicals or something?
Chemicals, yep.
How long had that been going on? I mean, some decades, years and years and years?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mid-seventies.
What's that?
Mid-seventies. It's not a junkyard.
You know, these things typically, they don't affect right away and we didn't know the effects of it. And now, now everybody's facing those effects from years back. And, you know, everybody thought they were getting a beautiful view. If you go up there on Reed Street, it's beautiful.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's some nice houses that are built up there. And, you know, they can't use their water. You know, I don't wanna have the same situation affecting other parts of our town. You know, we gotta be very cautious when it's contaminants. I think they have the area. And also, we just passed the new bylaw on this stuff and the town was adamant. Pretty much a majority of the town voted that no junkyards were to be put in Warren anymore. So, you know, the town spoke. They don't want them in town, you know?
Speaking of the town, these are pictures from the residents saying that they titled "Oil Resident" who worked on the water runoff.
Yeah. Yeah, when you go down there, when you go up there, the rainwater, you could see the rainbow slicks in the runoff water coming down the hill. And these are just little streams coming off there. Yeah.
The only thing I'll say with those though is we really don't know, I mean, any road surface is gonna have oil on it. I mean, you know, anywhere. So I guess we don't really know where that's coming from. That would be my caution on that. No, you know, there was no study to trace it back to anything. So it could be just, I mean, it could be the trucks delivering the cars, but I don't know that it's actually coming off the site.
And that's something that's of concern too because we've heard early, early in this discussion that there's no, there's no fluids coming out of the vehicles. The vehicles don't have fluids. Well, they do because they gotta start the vehicles because they wanna show the customers that they run on some of these vehicles. So they leave the fluids in them. Then it was, well, we don't drain the fluids as far as Co-Parts. They don't actively drain any fluids out of the vehicles. So they allow them to naturally drain, hopefully off when it was an accident or on to wherever they're stored before they bring them to the facility, they drain. But some of these drips are slow. You know, you get a small puncture in a radiator and it's drip, drip, drip. But after a while, that teaspoon of antifreeze turns into a quart, then to a gallon and then, you know, the radiator's empty. That rock, I don't like that rock because I think that rock conceals what's being actually dripping out of those vehicles. Okay? When we went up there to do our site walk, we were told right off the bat, "Nope, not how many vehicles leak in. There's no drips. There's no spills." We seen them all over that place. And every time we pointed them out and looked at them, "Oh, that's just one. Yeah, that's one spot." But we seen multiples of them and that starts adding up. The rock kinda conceals them. It's not like it's a flat surface like asphalt or concrete where it pulls out. It just hits that rock and drains down. So, yeah, it looks like a tiny little drip, but we're not seeing what's going underneath all that rock and sitting underneath there in the dirt. I think that that rock conceals more of the leaks and probably is not doing a good thing. You know, I think if we see an actual paved facility and seen all those leaks all over the place, they'd be much more dramatic because we'd see them pulling out because they'd nowhere for them to go into the soil. You know, I just, I think the risks outweigh the benefits for this project and it's not, it's not something we have to approve. The residents are against it. The risks are too high. We're not gonna be able to run town water to all those homes if they get contamination. You know, the effects on the commutes, you know, where things are falling off people, you know, off these vehicles and onto the road. We've had people complain about, "A lot hit a jack that was lying in the road that fell off one of the trucks." Or neighbors that are like, "Yeah, I just picked up another fender off my front lawn after, you know, one of the tow trucks drove by. A fender fell off." You know, our residents shouldn't have to go through that stuff. And I understand Co-Part's standing on that is, we're not responsible for what our drivers do. You know, okay, you know, good answer for a company, but it doesn't help us as a town. You know, your increased flow of these flatbeds coming in with these junk vehicles and parts dropping off of them are absolutely, positively Co-Part's problem. But our residents have to take care of it. They have to clean up the parts. They gotta clean up junk off their front lawns. They, when they run over something that was left in the road because of one of these vehicles, they're the ones that has to get their tired things. You know, it just, I don't see any benefits to it.
What do you think about the study and all the engineer review and all that?
That's great for stormwater. It's fine for stormwater, okay? But we're still gonna have contaminants. Water's still coming down the hill, okay? I understand they put some mitigating factors in there, but you have to constantly be on top of those. You have to have them cleaned. You have to have that stuff maintained. I just don't foresee it happening. The sure thing is, just, and for me, is I'm not approving... Uh, the sure thing is, just, and for me, is I'm not approving it because I don't want to have the risk. If anything happens, if any contaminants get down from that hill and we allowed it to grow, and it exposes more of an area now, I, I, I in good conscience couldn't do that. You know, and the residents don't want it. And I have to look at what the residents want also. I understand Coparts wanted, wants the, their business to grow. I understand that, but the residents don't want that expansion here. Um, they were adamant about it, and I've got to respect that.
Yeah, they, they hand out a bunch of signatures, didn't they?
Yeah, they did.
They did, and those, um, some of those people, that's more than half of those people that signed that have, um, bought houses after Coparts. You know, Coparts was already there when they bought the houses, and there were some of the people that had been there a very long time. Um, it is my understanding that the water treatment as it flows off of that hill will be, come down into those basins, and there's several scrubbers that are supposed to take care of any contaminants at all. And as I understand those, um, the system is, is even more of a system that's available at gasoline stations where they definitely would have a huge spill. So I don't, I don't know if you know that, Derek, seeing that you work a lot with parking areas and stuff when you...
Well, speaking in terms of water runoff.
Yes.
Or water retaining.
Mm-hmm.
If, if this is a new parking lot.
Yep.
It's an impervious area. That means that the ground is not going to absorb it. So in the project, we have to take all that water and hold it. We can't just let it run off the site. The, usually what it's done is, we excavate and have internal, um, deposits of water, big tanks, um, that they will, we calculate the area and say, well, if it rains for an hour, an inch, we have to hold that for several hours, all that water. So it's...
Is the basin doing basically the same thing?
Well, not really, because right now, you know, they're woods.
Right, but this, but the basin that's going to be put in is massive.
It's big, it's going to, should hold the water for no more than 72 hours and let it go. You know, even though it's a engineer and design project, it doesn't compare to having it at all woods.
Oh, definitely not.
Because all the woods, it looks like a sponge, they'll absorb that water. They, they don't hold it for 72 hours and then let it go.
Right.
Um, so there is, and, you know, I asked the engineer the question, you know, what happens if all this water drain doesn't happen? What will happen? And he said, will be really bad. And, you know, that's just for the new part. Right now, there's a, there's already a water runoff problem, because none of the other parts have this kind of prevention.
Right, but it was my understanding that the new basin would take care of quite a bit of it.
No, just the expansion.
Just the expansion, okay.
It doesn't take into account the, the previous.
Previous.
When I asked our engineer point blank, if, if this would stop any contamination from getting out, he's, and I said, would you guarantee that? And he's like, I cannot guarantee that.
No, I don't think anybody can guarantee that.
And that is a risk, and I don't think I'm willing to take that risk. If you cannot guarantee me 100%, these residents are not going to be impacted at all throughout the lives of their property and so be, so on, then it's not a risk that we're taking, because we're affecting more people, more livelihoods, and people that are on fixed incomes. They cannot afford to do these expensive water filtration systems. They, they're living on a fixed income, having a hard time, and this, this could destroy a home. And the last thing anybody wants is contamination in their well water, because once it happens, you cannot do anything with your home.
Right.
You know, you're not going to be able to sell it. You're going to have to mitigate that somehow, and you have to disclose that. And anytime you disclose, well, the well water's contaminated, I'm not buying a house.
Don't do it.
You know, moving on to the next one. So that, that could destroy people's homes. Um, and it's, it's a risk that's just not worth taking for me. And that's my opinion.
Thank you, David. Any more discussions?
Yeah, I've been thinking long and hard about this too for a long time. And, yeah, I mean, there are several issues that come to mind. One is contamination, but then again, you can't guarantee anything 100%. Uh, one is the queuing and hours of operation that seem to be a big deal to residents that are awake at 3 o'clock in the morning because there's a truck idling outside the house. Um, that is a problem. Um, you know, the line of sight they talked about, almost getting hit. And you drive up there and you can see exactly what they're talking about. But on the other hand, I look at it and say, all of the stuff that we had done, all the reports, all the plans, everything we come up, should mitigate as much of that as possible. And I understand they don't want it, but again, as Drew said, a bunch of them moved in after Copart were there. So they knew that the business was there, so... But, um, I mean, Copart has done everything we've asked for. You know, they've, and actually, they've done more. They're willing to do more. Um, I want the business in town. I like having more business in town. It's been there for years. It's grandfathered. We can't do anything. We can control hours. The zoning bylaws give us that ability. And I guess my thought is, you know, pickups have been 8 to 5, which is fine, but, you know, drop offs, maybe limit it to 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., something like that. So it's not too early in the morning, it's not too late at night. I've also seen, I've been surprised at this, um, in the last two weeks, I've probably seen 10 deliveries, I'm sure, going to Copart. They're all driving the speed limit. They pulled over on South Pedro, they were securing their loads. One driver was walking, I pulled over, I watched him, and he walked around and checking everything. So I don't know exactly what changed, or whether that's just a small group of the deliveries, but I was surprised to see that. It's all like there's a change in behavior. Um, I don't know. I think, I think there's, there's benefits to the town, things that Copart is willing to do for the town that we cannot do for ourselves. And I think they're being a good neighbor that way. Would I rather not have it there? Yes, I would. But do I think the benefits outweigh the possible negative consequences? With all the conditions we put in place, I think that's true.
And, and part of those conditions were that, um, there would be monitoring wells around the periphery, and also that it would be tested regularly, and if anything happened, stop immediately. And hopefully you would pick up anything before a problem is caused.
Right. But I mean, some of the, the things that residents kept on telling us was you have the, the queuing, the trucks, trucks parking there. I mean, the address was wrong, 600 Old West Warren Road, they were stopping there when the actual entrance was up here. So if that's changed, then the trucks wouldn't be stopping here if the, if the address was over here. That would eliminate that. If you end up moving the gate up, you could fit, I don't know, three trucks in, maybe that would avoid them parking on the road too. I mean, that would seem to solve one of their, their problems. Changing the sign from this way to this way, uh, so it's more visible, that would eliminate or address one of their concerns too. Um, and the operating hours, I mean, that was the other thing they told us, was, yeah, I'm seeing trucks at 4:00 in the morning, they're waking me up, uh, I can't get to sleep, or I come home and there's a truck blocking my driveway. Um, limiting the drop off hours, I think, would help address that. And that, I mean, those are the ones that they told us about most often. And I think that, you know, we can end up making that happen.
And the, and the complaint about the idling, which all we have to, all they have to do is call the police. And I know the police can't run up there all the time, but if there's a sign that says "No idling," that's also more enforceable.
Right. But if you can...
There's an idling Lawrence State entrance.
But if you can go up the, up the, um, the driveway for any, three trucks in there, that would solve that problem too, as long as that's done.
And we could get Dippin' Donuts to open it for him in the morning, and make donuts and stuff. They have an opportunity to make more money.
So anyway, I think that, I think there's more benefits to this than positive and negative consequences.
As long as everything is monitored.
As long as everything is monitored.
Monitored strictly.
Great. So I'm, I'm leaning toward yes also. I think, um, if, if we say no, nothing gets fixed. Um, the, this letter that we got asked, you know, that these things be fixed, you know, they didn't want it, but then they wanted these things fixed, but we can't do that. It's a permanent project. So the only way to make some of the issues go away or to alleviate them is to say yes and then condition the hell out of it. Um, so we have a bunch of conditions from TEC, which I think would solve or address a lot of these issues. Um, I talked to, well, I sent a, an email to Merrick to see if we can, um, condition the existing part and put some monitoring codes over there, and I haven't heard back yet, so I don't know. But I do believe if we do six-month monitoring on the, on the expansion site, and we do it, GZA recommended, um, spring and fall, so high water and low water conditions that we would, you know, that, that would be able to stay on top of it. Um, one of the conditions TEC put in there is if we, there are any contaminations at those wells, they have to shut down and deal with the issue right away.
The test wells, not the...
The test wells, yeah. Yeah, and those are before any resident wells. Um, TEC also put in there, you know, the, the ability for, um, for them to set up an account where residents could test their own water on a periodic basis to make sure their own water isn't contaminated. So I like that. Um, traffic, I think there should be no stopping, standing, idling, parking on Old West Warren Road there. I think we need signage. Um, vehicles should come in, go up, come out, and leave. There should, and that should be it. Um, in the traffic study, it seemed like it's a narrow window, but most of the traffic is from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I mean, that's the bulk of it. And the bulk of it is really, well, there's some in the morning and then kind of midday. So they didn't find a lot of overnight stuff. So I'd almost be willing to say if, if it's a one or two trucks overnight, um, as long as that doesn't increase and become a real nuisance, we could leave the hours, although personally, I kind of think I would say no to Sundays. Um, I think permitting it originally with no day off for the residents seems kind of extreme, so that's where I would be on that. So I would kind of, the, the other potential problem, if we, so right now, if they have a 24-hour period and they are getting deliveries mostly during that 7 to 5 window, if we compress that window, then all the deliveries on the outside are going to end up coming in. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So if you say, you know, no 8 o'clock, P, 8:00 p.m. deliveries, those deliveries are going to end up at 4 or 5, which is going to increase the traffic on the street at that point. So I'm a little leery about that. Um, oh, the signage, I definitely think they need to turn the, um, turn the sign also.
That is a big expense for them, but I think it will help immensely.
Um, TEC also said that it's in the town's right of way.
Right.
And it really shouldn't be there, so I don't know how that happened. So those two problems should be fixed.
But it should be visible too.
Right.
Yeah, definitely.
If tucked away so far that it's not visible for, that could make the situation even worse.
Yeah, I agree.
And I agree, it needs to be fixed, but as long as we recognize that it's going to cost you guys a lot of money to do that, because we had to sign it in front of our business, and, and it was a masonry sign, and I could not believe how much money it cost to repair it. It was astronomical.
Yeah.
Never in a million years would I have guessed that.
Yeah. Um, so one great idea on this petition, the, the letter that we got, was correcting, changing the address. And so I went to the assessors today. It's a simple form. You can take a lot with no address and give an address assigned to it. So I talked, so there's two, two lots, there's 47 and 47.1, and the driveway is actually on 47.1, so... So the, all right, so 600 is over here, and then this yellow lot and the lot behind it are 47 and 47.1. Those are both zero, um, Old West Warren Road. And so it's really a simple form. You give it to Priscilla, she figures out the number that it should be, and then they can have a new address. And I would, we should put that in the conditions. Um, that'll keep people from going to the other address. They put it in Google, they'll go right to the driveway. Um, what else? So I think in general, I, I like all the conditions pretty much, um, that TEC came up with. I think we also, I sent out conditions that have been set up for Sincarfa too, because this is like a solar site. They're going to be taking the trees down, they're going to be grubbing, um, it's going to be a bare hill. It is the same issues that we're dealing with, CPT, Borrego, all this. So we have to look at, um, if we approve it, we have to look at those sites and bring over stuff to make sure that, um, this site is done correctly then too. Um, I think that's it for me right now.
So can we just add a little bit? So one, one of the things that we talked about was moving the sign, expanding that little area there for visibility. Those are things that should be done anyways. Um, that's something that improves their business. It should not be held on, over us as, like, something like, well, you don't improve our project, we're not going to improve the frontage of our property. We're not going to do that. That's something a great business owner would sit there and say, okay, I have some problems here, and there's, there's a minus site issue. It's dangerous for the neighbors, because cars, dudes come down there pretty quickly. Some of these trucks have a higher turning, you know, much more of a turning radius, so it takes them longer to get into that, that driveway. You might want to do that to improve your property. Move the signage over a little bit, help improve your property. Residents have been complaining a long time about the vehicles. Move that gate back up more. These are things that they could do on their own, that they don't have to sit there and These are things that they could do on their own, that they don't have to sit there and say, well, we're not going to do that if you don't approve this project. That's not, that's holding us hostage. That's saying, you guys want something, so if you want that, you need to approve my project. This is what I want. Now, these are things that are helping your business and increasing the safety around your property. Those are things they should be doing anyways, whether it's approved or not. And conditioning it on approval is just not, I don't like that. That's almost, you're going to do it because you want something, and that's it. I don't like that at all. If they truly wanted to work towards increasing the safety, then they would have done that when it became an issue. They could easily move that gate up more to get more vehicles up there ahead, or redesign that a little bit, so maybe some of these vehicles, instead of sitting out there on the road, can pull up into their property and stage up on the property away from all the residents, so they're not sitting out there idling along people's residences. These are simple things that could be taken care of. Coparts has their higher management, which doesn't like that, but...
Can I just interrupt for a second?
No.
Just Copart. It's not Coparts. I have to.
Okay.
I have to. Everybody in this room has to. We all know it's Copart.
Okay.
Thank you, yes.
So either way, you know, they could have done these things on their own. You know, and, you know, it just, you know, having these issues come up and kind of holding our feet to it.
We're in charge, my friend.
I'm like, I'm like good with that. You know, they should have done this stuff.
Listen, when I put that driveway in, maybe four Coparts were part of this, we had an order of conditions. You cannot take that.
When we're not open for comment, that stage is ended.
You can explain this all in that. I wanted to take that hill down.
Okay.
I wanted to do that. I was told no.
We're not having comments right now.
Okay, that's fine.
That park has ended.
I just want to set the record straight for a change.
Okay, that park has ended.
Oh, it's already ended. There's going to be more comments.
I'm sorry, but you just, you just, you just, when we were on the way here, you said that John Fegel contaminated the land.
I never said that.
Yes, you did.
You said you had a problem with the previous owner, contamination.
I never said the previous owner.
First of all, yes, you did.
You did not.
Hundred percent.
Bullshit.
Who's got the minutes?
Three people listened to this.
I never said previous owner.
And Copart would never bought that land. They did 180 days of poor samples in that place. You cannot say...
First of all, I never said previous owner contaminated that land.
You did, so when are you going to retract?
Well, I don't, I don't know, we heard that one, but it wasn't said here.
We just listened to it.
You did or listened to it?
Okay, it wasn't said here.
When David, when you were talking about Reed Street, you said about the previous owner...
Yeah, but I just think we're talking about...
Reed Street, previous owner.
Not, nothing to do with your project.
Well, I hope not.
We were talking about Reed Street.
Because...
And Reed Street contamination is not because of automobiles. Let's get that straight.
Our district, I did state that.
It is not because of automobiles.
Who's got that?
Nope.
There were few things going on up there, okay? So that being said, the hearing has been closed, so we're not accepting comments, okay? I understand your passion and...
I worked very hard my whole life to not be taken that way.
We never said, we never said you guys did.
Okay.
Okay? We didn't say that about you guys. We said, when we went up there, we seen contamination, okay? And they're not being frank with us about it, okay? We seen spills after they told us not, there were none, okay? So that's what we're talking about. Nothing got mentioned about previous owners up there.
On that property?
On, as far as with you. We talked about Reed Street.
Okay, well, I must assert that, I'm sorry, because that's why I...
It can happen, you know, and I understand your passion and, you know, but the public hearing has closed on that. We're deliberating now.
We did not show up because we're not here to comment on the situation.
You're more than welcome to stay. It just...
No, we're taxpayers, we should stay.
Right, and you're more than welcome to.
Point of the matter is, let's not misspeak about people who previously owned the land.
I can assure you that...
We did not say that.
I can assure you that, that's what I asked. David, David, you mentioned about what happened in Reed Street. Can you tell us a little bit about it? That's when he said about the previous owner.
Right, well, let's not misspeak about John Fegel, because the Fegel's lands has been...
No, we didn't say anything about John.
Coparts doesn't buy contaminated land, they're not stupid.
No, we even brought up Fegels or anything like that.
The previous landowners, we heard of...
From Reed Street.
Reed Street.
Reed Street had nothing to do with the land, nothing.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we ask? Why?
The public hearing is closed.
No, we understand it's over about this situation, but why is this guy allowed here? Is it because Kathy and Becky aren't here?
So we're talking about this right now.
So I'm just asking, because he has a stay away.
You can ask him, okay? We're going to deliberate on what we're supposed to be here for, okay? There's no legal reason why he can't be here.
I wonder how many cameras. Everybody needs to be meeting.
So, okay. So moving forward.
Moving forward. Well, you know, guys, I'm kind of like a clinical guy, and I take these plans and look through them. I follow the peer review. If it was an isolated project, I don't see any problem, technically speaking, for that. But on the other hand, people voted for me, and we have a lot of signatures here where they don't want the project to expand. So it's kind of like I'm in the middle, trying to decide. We were just talking about those little improvements, and I believe those improvements, we started them as part of trying to make the neighbors happy and try to, you know, fix what they have. It really struck me when they said, well, if you don't approve us, we don't do that. That hurt me. It really hurt me. So that's where I am. You know, I see your points, all your points, it's a great business, I know them, you know, it's just like another business in town. I see, you said that if we don't approve it, they don't do this and they don't fix that, and I see your point about contamination. And I've been in other planning boards, sitting over there, like the client today, and just because one person said, I don't want it, I got denied. So it's, I'm trying to decide where should this go, but that's been a...
And I agree with you entirely, because I am torn, totally torn. I was, I, like you and David, was, I was really put off when Copart said, if you don't approve that, we're not doing any of this. That, that just is, it's just like, you're not being a nice person. You know?
Well, maybe it's not about being a nice person, it's just something, you know, I have the project in my hand and I have the signatures on the other hand.
Yes.
And they were valid points.
Yeah.
There are both, there are benefits on both sides, everything, but, you know...
That's the dilemma we all face.
Correct.
It's like, it's a huge thing, and you go home at night and you don't, you don't sleep because all you're doing is thinking about, what's the right thing to do?
It's a difficult decision.
So is this something we're deliberating on, or is it something we are voting on tonight? Did you put in for vote?
No, not vote expected, I think in probably the next meeting. This is just the discussion.
So you, you know, I just think, I disagree with you, Ed. I think the risks outweigh it. I think Copart is a convenient neighbor at times. They have done some good stuff for the community, but I think they do it as part of their outreach, their publicity to, you know, you know, basically, you know, keep their name in good graces with the residents. You know, they, the issues that we see from all the people that have signed petitions, every one of those people is a resident of our community, has a life here, a reason why they're opposing it, and if this was, if this was a solar project, it probably wouldn't get approved. If it was anything else with that many signatures, it probably wouldn't get approved. The last, you know, online auto auction place that wanted to move in here, they did their outreach, they realized the neighbors really opposed it, which caused us to, you know, reach out and do a new bylaw or bylaw change for it because of the outcry from the residents. It's the same thing. You know, same thing that's going on, there's still residents, they still have a say. All these people, I don't know for sure, but they live in the area. I don't know if they all own the homes here, but I'm sure a majority of them do. And, you know, they're obviously upset enough to put their name on a piece of paper opposing it. And we got to respect that. You know, with the other project, they seen that, you know, something, we don't want to be where we're not wanted, we'll move on, and thank you, thank you for your opportunity. I understand Coparts is already there, it's grandfathered, but there's no reason why we have to allow them to get bigger. When they get bigger, I see more problems happening, more traffic, more vehicles.
More money.
You know, you don't increase the size of your, your project and your business if you're not expecting to take on more. What's that going to look like in the future? More tow trucks coming at varying times of hours? You know, more, more people coming up from all these states, putting cars on flatbeds that probably shouldn't exactly be on flatbeds, and driving away with them. You know, so be it, that's their business model, but I can't see how we would increase that more. We're already having problems with the size it is at now, and might it get bigger?
Thank you, David. I have a question. So I guess, if we were going to say no, should we have said no at the beginning?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Instead of going through the peer review process? I do feel like the peer review process kind of hijacked the project in a way, because Copart presented, I mean, the first meeting was a plan, but they didn't really want to talk about it, they wanted to go through the peer review process, which seemed fine at the time, sort of, but, you know, now I kind of wonder if we had brought up...
We're doing our due diligence, you know, like any other project, we're doing our due diligence. It's the same thing with solar. We go through the peer review, we go through the whole process, we don't just sit here and say, you know, something we can deny you right now, how many times have we gone through peer review at solar projects and things have come up? You know, different issues have been brought up, like, okay, maybe this isn't going to work out this way. Okay, you're telling us all these basins are here, that's going to be fine, but it's going to impact this now by doing that. You're going to do your due diligence. And I think with them, due diligence was done, we looked at the peer review, and, you know, looking at it and hearing from our own engineer, right off the bat, can you guarantee that the well water won't be contaminated? I can't guarantee that. That, that, that was like solidified in me at that point.
Could he get into you with that?
And I sat there like, you know something? You can't guarantee that you're going to keep it safe for the residents. And, you know, now it's in our hands. Do we sit there and roll those dice and see what happens? You know?
But I see your point, Rich, but you know, part of all of the peer review, that was part of the decision-making process. We learned things we didn't know before. And if we'd said no at the start, that probably wouldn't have been good either. But now we have more information, so we're going to make an informed decision.
Okay.
Has any of this been talked about with legal counsel, anything on Copart?
So I did send Merrick TEC's conditions, right? And then I did ask about being able to put monitoring wells on the existing site as part of a condition for expansion. I have not heard back.
Of course, the process, you know, when you have a new project, you have neighbors saying no at the beginning, and we're trying to make it work somewhere in the middle, you know, and we've come up with all these little ideas to make it work, but at the end, you know, I remember saying, this project, it's a go, but they have to make the neighbors You know, is that easy?
The neighbors aren't happy though.
Unfortunately, brown water.
But what would make the neighbors happy if you don't have Copart expand and they have all of the things fixed?
Well, yeah, but that's something that a business should do anyways. When you see, when you see a problem, when you see a safety issue, and it's brought on by your business, address it. They could address those issues. You know, the signage is their property. That's something that they can easily address, that's their, that's their issue. Bringing back the gate of more on their property is something that benefits them, it keeps the neighbors quiet.
Of the, like, moving the sightline on the road.
Well, even moving the sightline. They own that, you know, they can get that, but they conditioned it saying, well, if we don't get approved, we're not doing that. That's not a good neighbor. That's something that's a safety issue, it's identified as a safety issue. A good neighbor sits there and says, you know something? We'll have to deal with what we got, but yeah, we should probably address that because, yeah, we agree, it's a safety concern. You know, they're trying to force our hand. You know, you don't get this unless we get that. You know, that's, that's not how...
Yeah, you mentioned it, right? Saying if we don't approve it, we don't get to fix all this.
Right, and that's not a good neighbor. You know?
But where some of those issues were not, people were to work. You know, the sightline thing, yeah, you drive and you can't see, but you, they presented that that needs to be fixed, period, which residents wouldn't know. Yes, they'd say, oh yeah, that's a problem, but they wouldn't know that it really, really should be fixed because it's part of the state laws. So we've learned a lot from, from everything that's gone on that we didn't know previously, and perhaps they didn't know either. We'll give them the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah, I see Copart like a good business in... Yeah, I see Copart like a good business in town. Like I mentioned in one of the meetings, what they should do is buy a property in 67, for example, like a station where all the trucks deliver over there, and one day a week, they bring everything in here so they don't bother every day to the residents. But, you know, they're just positive ideas trying to help move the project.
There's a big parking lot.
There is?
Just...
Yeah.
So, I've heard from conservation that the basins, that, you know, the stormwater aspects are pretty good. It's pretty beefy. It will catch the water coming off, maybe even overdesigned. So, there have been residents who have mentioned that that would help them with their water problems. I think Gary Odient was one, maybe, you know, he was saying there's more water coming into his yard now from that hill with the trees on it, right? So, there are residents along in that area that would see some benefit in terms of water.
Yeah, but like I said, on one hand, we have a good project, peer review and everything, and on the other hand, we have a lot of residents somehow in one department.
If I may?
Actually, I'm sorry, you can't. The public hearing part is closed, and we have to stick to that. If we give you opportunity to speak, that's bringing in new information about the project.
It's not about the project, it's about the letter, the signatures.
We can't, we can't accept anything new. Sorry.
Okay, so, we continue for the next meeting to vote?
Okay, so, when we vote, we have 14 days to render a decision with our conditions. So, you have to be thinking about, you have to be thinking now about if, well, if you're going to vote no, I guess, well, you need to come up with reasons why you're voting no. And then if you're voting yes, you have to think about the conditions because 14 days is not a long time. We have 90 days to do this process, but only 14 when we put the nail in.
You did send a draft today for conditions, right?
Well, I sent the Sincarfa ones out and then, which would address some of the stormwater issues, things like that.
The TEC is right.
And then TEC was from September 30th.
We, I suggest that we go through those and come up with a set of conditions regardless the outcome.
You want to do, maybe do that at the next meeting?
Yes.
Go through TEC? Because I'd still like to look at Sincarfa, so maybe we do one more meeting?
For this, I don't think there'd be time.
We have 90 days. Or we can, can we meet in two weeks? Have everybody?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Well, vote on.
November 8th will be 41 days. And if you... And I need time to type everything in.
So, if we met on the 8th, went through conditions, I mean, frankly, there's enough in these conditions. If you're going to vote no, you can probably pull some stuff out of this. And if you're going to vote yes, then we have the conditions, so. But I would like to maybe go through these and talk a little bit more about...
Yeah, we should.
All right, so we come with our conditions and then we vote? November 8th?
Well, I would say... November 8th would be just another follow-up meeting, continuation. And then a vote would be, what, two weeks after that, 22nd or the 29th?
You could say possible vote, but I'm not...
I also talked to, Kathy and I talked, and we have to remember the snow's going to start, and that doesn't matter if it snows and we can't have a meeting. She's been here doing this for a long time.
I know, but I'm not going to rush. I don't want to rush this.
So, what she suggested is to come with the conditions and try to vote that day so that we have the time to do everything that's needed to be done.
Well, if we talk about it next time, then we can vote. You'll have, I think that'll work.
Yeah, maybe going through the conditions and working on them, we get a better idea of the project.
Yep.
In our decision.
And we could, you know, depending on the 8th, we could meet anytime, the 15th, the 22nd, the 29th of November, I mean, whatever, right?
Right, because we could do the week after if we're up in a time crunch.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no reason we couldn't.
And if it snows, we'll do it in June.
Yes.
We're good at it.
Or we'll just meet on a Wednesday.
It could be any day, any day except Thursday.
Yeah.
Why's Thursday?
I don't know.
Somebody always tires up the meeting room.
Okay, so, make a motion to continue and work on the...
Yeah, so I make a motion to continue the discussion on the Copart application until...
November 8th.
November 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Any chance we can get a copy of the photos as well as the petition that was submitted as well?
Well, I think you had. Yeah, this is old stuff.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if this is stuff we hadn't received, okay.
Yeah, save everything. No, this is all the stuff that was submitted with you guys.
Yeah, and you got a copy of this.
And we haven't seen the draft conditions yet either, if there's...
Well, there's still a draft.
We don't have a draft, yeah.
It's like the draft of the draft, so.
What was that, you pointed out, I'm sorry?
The resident letters, have you seen?
We have not seen any of the resident letters.
You got them last time.
Yeah.
No.
We requested them, I don't think we received them.
I didn't either, I didn't know there was a request. But I can get them too.
Thank you.
Well, okay. Well, I think they're all printed.
Ah, okay.
I think I have, actually. It's the same letter, just signed by 15 different people.
Yeah, yeah.
Continue the meeting, if I have them, I will give them.
Actually...
Here you go.
What's next?
Gravel pits.
So, tell me because I wasn't there.
I mean, it was the same sort of thing as last time, right?
Pretty much the same, same issues with every one of them.
Yeah, you know, they need signs up.
The terracing was...
Terracing in some cases.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't find any, well, except for the one, which he knew he was going to work on. So, and, yeah, the rest of them, just signs.
Can you, I know I wasn't there, but could you add a little note on the one on, right next to the town property on the 19th?
Oh, yeah. It was me and you.
They've been, they've been working and the trucks are leaving a big dirt on the road, and every time I go with my bike, it's like, woo!
Yeah, which one?
Some thing.
Some of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went to that, yeah.
It's been a work and they just leave all the dirt on the road, and every time I rode my bike, it's like...
Sliding a lot.
Yeah, it could be dangerous. I have a dirt bike, it doesn't really, it's fun, but other riders might be in trouble. You know, it's very scary when you...
It's dangerous.
When you ride a street motorcycle on a road with dirt on top of it.
Which having grass clippings.
Exactly, same thing.
I guess that would be the building inspector?
No. Well, he cleaned it once, but it, you know, it's just like, mention on the, please clean frequently the road after the trucks go out and dirt just, you know, I always look on, what if, let's say somebody is riding there and it falls because of that, and we didn't even say anything. At least we said it.
Or it's nighttime and they don't see it.
Did you send out the levers already, Joe?
Okay.
We're still investigating.
Yeah, so the other problem is, are these permits expired because there's a five-year permit and then you can...
Three, three-year extensions.
Three, three-year extensions.
They're all over that.
So, but the thing is, I was talking to one of the owners, all those gravel pits were permitted in the 90s, so it's hard to say, are they grandfathered? Was that particular, the bylaw we have? When was the bylaw put in? So, there's got to be, yeah, some research done before we can flat out say that they're expired.
So, legal's looking into that?
It's in the bylaws. Legal doesn't have to look into it, you just have to look into it.
But I guess it's when was the bylaw...
When was it?
Adopted? I don't see, no? They may be grandfathered then. The other issue was...
I got a question for you guys.
Hold on. You know, if you have a permit and you sell the land, the gravel pit does the permit transfer? And from what I can tell, it does. It's like any other permit?
No, I thought we, you have, I thought we seen that it doesn't.
We're still investigating, but...
Okay, so we still got research.
It looks like all the gravel pits are going to need a new permit. It looks like they're all expired. So, and it also, the building inspector should be the one doing inspections, not the planning board. You're welcome to go along and to take notes so that when it does come up for renewal, you have your conditions. So, a lot of work to be done, but it should probably all be done in one or two meetings in the winter, once we have time to go through it.
Before you guys were in the planning board, I remember when I just got in the planning board, there was a client who had a project approved before, and then he sold it, and he had to come before the board to approve it. I was very new at that time, so I...
It was in 2012. One was sold, it was closed as a gravel pit. It was bought, then a special permit was applied for to open it as a gravel pit in the new name.
Well, the one I'm talking about is not a, is not a gravel pit. It was just a, you know, a project and it was sold. So, they came to move the license, I think, or something.
Yeah, I think minimally, a new owner would have to come before the board and just say, hey, I'm the new owner.
And show intention of the gravel pit.
Yeah, and if it closes, then you definitely need to do it.
As BJ also mentioned, if it hasn't been acting, an active gravel pit for three years, it probably shouldn't have a current, like, so she's still invested, like, it's a project we talked about.
So, the permit would expire after three years?
Just doing it all at once, because they pretty, we don't know fully, I've only seen three, but those three have expired. And there's still, how many are there? Seven, eight to go through?
Eight, I think. Did you guys work to Maple Bay, there's Demetrius, right?
Yeah.
Rolling Hills? Or did you not get, you didn't...
No, we couldn't get into Rolling Hills.
No, not the...
They had to change an address that was not loaded.
Oh, did they?
They called me.
Yeah, see, that's a problem too, isn't it?
That's something we need to do with these solar sites too. We need to stay on top of them.
That's a full-time job.
Yeah.
That's Jill getting an assistant, having somebody do that full-time.
Sorry, did you have a question?
Yeah, my name's Mike Stasiak. I live on Spring Street in West Warren, and I have a gravel pit, and nobody from the town has ever come to my property. So...
Did you get a permit for it?
Yeah.
When?
When I got solar.
When was that?
Maybe somewhere around 2010.
When you got the permit?
Do we have a, so, but do we have a permit out there?
I only just wondered about gravel pits two months ago.
And every time I asked, they said, well, we're behind on everything, we'll get to you.
So, Spring Street?
Yeah.
Who did you ask? Who did you ask?
Somebody at the planning board, building inspector, assessors, maybe, I don't remember. There was somebody definitely that works in the town offices.
Before my time.
Couple of years ago, three years ago.
Did anybody come to us saying, hey, there's a pit over there?
Well, if he got one in 2010, we should have him listed.
He spelled your last name all over it. I'm sure it's on here too.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I see it right here too.
2015 is when I got my solar.
So, 2010 was a gravel pit?
Roughly.
Okay, and then 2015 solar.
This board's trying to be more proactive, but...
Oh, please don't.
We're playing a lot of catch-up with a lot of things, so. Wonder how many more are out there that we don't know about?
Yeah, I know.
There's multiples.
Rich Demetrius knows.
Yeah, he's the one that told me.
He knows every one.
There's one that used to be owned by Bernie Drazek, which is like near Bay Path Street. I never knew that was that. Now, Jerry Moran bought some of his property or most of his properties, I don't know really who owns the property now.
So, that might be some of the...
Rich Demetrius, I guess, would be the one to talk to.
See if you can get him to come in maybe for a little bit. Can you watch him?
Yeah, he could probably ramble off like 10 more that we don't even know about.
I know, yeah, yep.
And as far as, like, I was looking into buying one, at the time, people had told me that, oh yeah, you got to go through the whole process again. But then other people have said, no, once it's permitted. So, I don't know, like you said, you had an legal, because I don't think anybody in the town really knew.
Yeah.
Seems to be, it's good for five years.
Warren's always been kind of a relaxed town.
It's good for five years, and then it can be up for renewal if there's no protest from the butters, and then it can be consecutively renewed for three more, so nine more years, basically, three times, and then has to come up again.
So, what if a butters are protesting?
Then you have to, you can't just say yes, it has to be a thing.
Probably Karen, period.
Yeah, like any other...
I don't know fully on that because I'm still investigating, but I do know everyone I've looked at has expired.
So, but then the other question is, what if it's in operation for more than 14 years?
I don't think there's a bylaw on that one.
They just have to reapply.
Yeah.
So, after the fourth, each permit you get 14 years.
Ultimately, you get 14.
Can, if there's no...
If an extension is approved, you get three, three-year extensions if we approve that.
As long as they've been actively acting as a gravel pit. If they haven't, BJ said, so we'll talk to BJ on that. If it's been three years and they haven't been actively using it, then it should expire.
So, item number five says discussion on gravel pit inspections and special permit renewals. And a letter from a butters?
What's that?
And a letter from a butters?
That's what it says in the agenda.
Yeah, the letter that you were all sent out from Charlene who left, she was here.
Oh, that was, yeah, okay. John bought his mother's land or however that, transferred to...
Well, that's what we're talking about, the transfer.
Yeah, so the question is, is that permit, does the permit get transferred?
We're finding out.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Because that sale was relatively recent, if I remember.
All right, go back to business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Michael Borrell here. So, I just wanted to get something on the record. There was an issue that was happening right here. Charlene left. You can see that her, John kicked her chair, and I have it on video that Carrie was saying inappropriate things to me, and then John swung his fist at me and Carrie pushed him away, and that's why the police came here. So, I just got a message.
Did you call them?
Charlene called them.
Charlene called, okay.
So, so...
I was wondering why it came in, I didn't know.
Yeah, so there was a harassment issue going on here, so she... Yeah, so there was a harassment issue going on here, so she just messaged me that she left because John threatened her. So we're going to do a police report after this, and I have what was said on this body cam in my phone. So that is why Charlene is not here, so I'm sure she would probably, would like to come back at some point in time. But I just wanted to get on the record that she was speaking and we didn't want to interrupt the meeting, yes, there were some words exchanged here that was going on, and that's what happened. But I can explain off the record if you want, but I just wanted, that on the record that there was a harassment issue and a little brawl going on right here. Nothing to do with me, nothing to do with Charlene, it was instigated by the other two. And that's why Carrie was asked to leave and then John left. So I just wanna, so what I'm trying to say is Charlene...
So Warren PD's handling it?
Well, they should be handling it, yes, because Charlene left out of fear because John was harassing her and kicked her seat, and you can see that her seat has moved a couple inches. So that was enough to put her in fear to get her leave. So she just sent me a message that, that's the issue why she's not here right now, because she would be speaking. So I just wanted to just...
Thank you, Mike.
Let you know of the truth. Thank you.
Yeah, she wrote to me, I'm not coming back, I called the cops.
Oh.
Got really nothing to do with us, though. I mean, it's a police issue.
It should be happening in our meeting.
Yeah.
I don't care who it is, nobody should be intimidating or harassing or anything to anybody in any meetings, anywhere in the town.
And it's disruptive.
It is disruptive.
Disruptive, so...
As you said, the police handle it.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right.
Okay, back to business?
Back to business.
So I'll make a motion to pay, to do the payroll for Jill in the amount of 280.70, 224.56, 224.56, and 224.56.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Payroll, make a motion for payroll for Kathy Zub in the amount of 299.04 and 280.35.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve and sign invoices for TEC for the Copart review in the amount of $5,102.40 and $1,800.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve and sign invoices for OTO in the amount of $2,548.52 on Lot 3 and $2,911.02 on Lot 4.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is comments and concerns?
No, minutes.
Minutes.
Oh, I'm hungry.
Thinking dinner.
All right, so I have to say, I'm a little confused on the September 13 minutes, because in our agenda for September 13th, we were approving the minutes from the 13th.
Yeah, and it got, it was all three and a half hour meeting and we didn't get to it, so I put it back on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
That's right.
I wondered why I hadn't ticked those off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Got paid instead of...
Oh. Okay, so then with the, I have questions about September 13th. Did we, we made a motion to continue the public hearing for Donna? Did we not set a date?
No, we didn't. We did.
We did? Did we?
No, I think they were, they were gonna go back and think about it.
When she had made the decision as to what she wanted.
Right.
What she wanted to present.
I always, always have to set a date because it's a public hearing and we're continuing it. We have to re-advertise. Even if we set the date and threw an email, now they say, we're gonna just continue it, that's fine, but if we don't set a date...
We can check the video.
Okay. It would be good to know.
I'll download the video and send it to you guys and...
Stay on top of us, because if you have a public hearing and it gets continued and you don't set a date certain, you have to re-advertise again, because then no one knows. And if you do set the date and they're not ready, you can just continue it, they don't even have to come. In the meeting on that day, we just continue it for another two months.
You have to set a date every time you continue because, I gotta look back, but I don't think any of hers were ever a date set, it was always continued because she would...
All right, well, we need to start doing that then. Because we had...
Because she didn't know, she didn't know when she'd have an engineer and she's like, I...
Yeah, I think it was just continued to a later date.
Yeah, we can't, yeah, we need a date certain.
Also, she also falls more into that process than we did for the, that we did together. Remember when somebody comes and says, hey, what about...
The open door policy.
The open door policy.
I know, that's, yeah.
That's where she, she was at that point, because we told her, look, you can do this, you can do that. Talk to your guy and he will give you the options and then come back for something and this is what I want.
But she took out the permit application.
Yeah.
So unless we would have closed the hearing...
But we'll have to advertise it next time.
Yeah.
We learn the hard way.
I think we gave her too many ideas.
Probably.
Yeah. Well, it's, you know, I deal with clients like that all the time. They wanna do this, they wanna do that, and when they see all these other options and things, you know, it's really hard. Personally, I think it's gonna take her a while to come back.
Yeah. We'll think about it.
So the other thing on the minutes for the 13th is that we made a motion to approve and sign the minutes from the 13th. That's what it says, so, this is minutes from the 13th and we made a motion to approve and sign on the 13th, so I wonder, was it really the 23rd?
I'm gonna write the dozen back.
Yeah.
I think it was the 23rd, I think that's what we...
Yeah, I can double check, I can fix it.
Okay.
You're gonna have to remind me because after that last meeting, so.
I can circle back to that.
Yeah.
So...
Easy to change.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the September 13th as corrected, how about that? Just figure out what minutes we approved.
So September 13th, as corrected on, but to see if the Donna was, Donna was continuing to a date?
Yeah, and then which minutes did we really approve?
Okay.
I think we can approve the other two and we're just gonna have to hold off on that one, if we haven't changes like that.
Yeah, maybe, huh? Okay. All right, so I'll rescind my motion.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 27th and October 2nd, how about that?
That's good.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now can we do commenting?
Wait, wait, yes.
So commenting potential?
Has anybody heard anything about CPT?
Okay, let me think, so...
So we told them, the zoning board of appeals said no, nobody's heard anything since?
Haven't heard anything since then.
No, we haven't heard anything since, and conservation has been working with them, they have a wetland replication they need to work on, they have a lot of erosion, a lot of erosion on that site.
That was...
Well, and we knew that would happen.
Yeah.
What happens when they don't listen?
Yeah. Because Sun Pen is, it's all crickets, and then, well, Selectman would know ASD Cronin Road, which the Selectman denied the tree cutting plan.
Right.
They've been denied the access road, obviously, to that property, so they're suing the town. And Merrick O'Connell had sent a response to the initial lawsuit, so that's kinda like in the initial stages of stuff, so...
Yeah, I've been seeing a lot of stuff on Facebook where people are saying, it's getting approved, it's going through, and...
For which?
For, was that ASD Cronin?
Uh, no.
No, and people are getting ahead of themselves.
Yeah, there was also, there was also the comment made that it was in Brookfield.
Yeah.
On Cronin Road in Brookfield, so it, yeah, it was...
It's actually Brookfield.
Lot of, lot of misstatements were made, so, but people don't know.
And driveway is in Brookfield too, the access, everything's in Brookfield, the only thing they're trying to do in Warren is run the power out.
Right.
From the site down Cronin Road, which we have denied in a number of ways.
And how can they sue us when it's owned by somebody else, that property? That other guy that owns...
Well, there's, there was debate whether, whether it is owned by somebody else, because that was, it was a access road and then it turned into a, more of a public road, but there was never anything where it became a public road, where the town took it over.
He just allowed them to use it.
Yeah, he just kinda went with it. So, yeah, that's to be debated.
Yeah.
But either way, you know, we said no to the trees, cut in the trees, and putting the poles in the town violates the bylaw.
Right.
So...
And there's other complicating factors, there's a landowner who owns, actually owns part of Cronin Road that they would have to go through. The ZBA has denied it, so, you know...
Last ditch efforts.
Merrick O'Connell's gonna do well, so...
I read one of the comments that they said, because Warren has been so tough with solar, now they are going into the towns, neighbor towns.
Yeah, yeah, I did see that, yeah.
By the way, North Brookfield is okaying solar batteries and they have room for more, so if anybody comes to Warren and they want a place to go, they can go there.
Hardwood is hearing plans for two large facilities, I think 35 and 45 acre facilities up off Old Greenwich Plains Road.
The other day, the other day I went for a, flying on a helicopter in Massachusetts, oh, it's terrible, you can see all these patches.
Yeah.
So ugly.
Yeah.
Doesn't really help anything at all.
No.
Maybe in Texas, you know? Where the, where the sun hits...
Yep, I'm paying, I'm paying electric bill and I've got how many, 40 panels and...
Don't let them put them in Texas.
Yeah, yeah, I can't produce enough electricity to take care of our house, and there's just, my husband...
There was a documentary that they, what if they put the solar panels on the moon? That was very interesting.
Really, and they're gonna run a line from the moon to the earth?
I'll send you the video, I'll look forward to sending it, but it, you know, it was really, it was like filling the whole United States with panels on the moon.
I flew from Phoenix, I flew from Phoenix to San Diego a couple times, and west of San, west of Phoenix, there is a solar facility that fills the horizon, it goes miles and miles and miles in every direction. It's just, it's as far as you can see.
Wow.
Yeah, thousands and thousands and thousands of acres.
So...
Actually square miles and square miles and square miles.
Destroying the environment.
Well, the Selectmen have a particular projects coming in front of them on Thursday for hydro.
Oh.
The hydroelectric plant.
Okay.
Where would it be? On the river, obviously.
The right building.
Oh, yeah.
There used to be a hydro plant that was there and their whole, whole right complex ran off of hydroelectricity.
Yeah, I can see that, there's a lot of water going over that dam.
There is.
All the time.
So... That could be managed to be made so it could power a town.
Cool.
And would be environmentally safe?
Environmentally safe.
It all already exists.
And, and solar could not compete with it.
Yes.
Because...
Especially at night.
It would be continuous.
Water doesn't turn on.
Water doesn't stop at night.
I know a solar engineer once and said, they're admittedly 50% effective because half the time it's dark.
Yeah.
It's like, yeah, okay, that works.
And it's too low, the sun's too low in the sky.
Right, you don't get...
The only time that we really produce a lot of electricity, because my husband really sits and watches that for about three hours a day.
See, what I personally believe is in this area, up high in these elevations, up north, the money is on who installs it, because then you, we see them, they sell them to another owner, to another, to another one. That means that there is not, it's no business really owning a big solar array.
Right.
The money is building it.
It's a commodity.
It's building it and reselling it all.
Yeah, the state gives them all that money.
It's just, it's, it's an incentivized program.
A subsidy.
And I go back, if you wanna be green, not cut me green.
Exactly.
Right, but when the state says their goal is whatever, 50% green energy in 10 years, or whatever it happens to be, put solar everywhere.
I'm going with my oil and natural gas, because it's reliable.
It works.
And you have solar.
Yeah.
I have solar. Never would do that again.
Come on!
No, not, not asking again.
Was that Bob's idea?
Nope, that was my idea.
Yeah, maybe we could put a hydroelectric plant, koi pod.
Don't worry.
You could put a hydroelectric plant going down my swale when it rains.
There you go.
Like tonight and tomorrow?
Yeah.
Supposed to get like four inches of rain or something.
There's a guy that lives on our street and he's down a little bit, I never ever walk past his house because I don't hear water running down my culvert.
Yeah, I've been down there.
Gary's.
Yeah, Gary, yeah.
Yeah, no, and sometimes at our house, you can't hear it.
Can I fish in it?
You can try, but...
Let's try to move on, not only.
Okay, all right.
Is the Paul Rickney has any comments or concerns?
Yes, I have a question. So regarding, so I have a question for the board, I had emailed the board a complaint and I haven't received any response to that. I'm assuming that you did receive the complaint, so I'm just asking, did you receive the complaint?
Can you remind us?
It was actually a Copart complaint.
When did you send that?
It was sent two weeks ago, or three weeks ago.
Yes, we got it.
Okay, and then my next question is, since that was a complaint against Copart and one of the concerns that I was able to figure out is whether they actually have a permit or not, because technically according to other town officials, they do not have a current valid permit. So I would like to know, did you check into that? Do they have a permit or do they not have a permit?
Are they looking for a permit?
We talked about it for the previous?
For the existing...
The existing site?
So I attended the October 2017 meeting and filmed it for YouTube, and they transferred the permit knowing that the property was being sold and there was never a new application. So that means, according to the board's own previous discussions, there is no valid permit for Copart and a new one was never applied for. And the transfer was illegal in October of 2017, because I knew it was a sale and I Cause I knew it was a sale and I asked the board then, "This is a sale." But, but if you look at your own, uh, meeting minutes, it was transferred, which is an illegal transfer. Cause according to town council found out that it wasn't legally able to be transferred. So technically, there is no valid permit. Back to our, so they have no valid permit as of today.
Hold on, Mike. Can we, can they transfer a permit?
No.
Well, if the land, land is sold to a new owner, I guess the question is, does the permit transfer?
Right.
My guess is it does, but...
Well, because they're doing it with solar.
Yeah.
They're selling, they're transferring those projects left and right.
Right, they don't have to come before us.
And they're not coming before, before us. So they treat... Just thinking, what you're saying is every solar project couldn't be sold then if that was what was being applied.
Yeah, right.
So...
Isn't that true for every business?
And that would be everything.
Somebody bought a restaurant already in operation, wouldn't all the permits transfer with the sale of the business?
Yeah.
Well, I, I remember that meeting.
No, I'm talking about...
I remember that meeting.
Were you on the board?
Yeah, far, far away and they, the client did comes, told us that they sold it and the board, they wanted the board to approve the transfer. That's all I remember.
Well, well, that's correct, because it was worded to transfer the permit. But the issue was is it went from somebody who was sitting here to Copart of Connecticut, which is a totally separate company.
Yeah, that's okay.
Which, yeah.
That's the same with the solar.
Like solar company A gets the permit, does their building and frankly, as soon as they get that occupancy permit, they sell it to B.
Right.
And it just, everything, you know, transfers over.
But, but I thought the board just said a few months ago that if there's a sale and it's sold from one owner from A to B, then a new permit needs to be applied. That's what, what, that's what I watched on the video, Facebook video.
I mean, that's...
No.
I brought the bylaws on me, but I looked it up and it turns out it says that they need to apply for a new permit. So that individual sold it and in that email I sent you all the assessors records, which proves that everything was sold. Out of this name into a brand new name is a brand new business.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, if you can tell us what bylaw section that you saw that under, I'd...
It's right there, right?
Right. I don't even know that it would be...
And, and it's technically was, technically was the same discussion that you just had regarding the Brimfield road thing that went from person A to, to a totally separate person. That was a sale. That is where your meeting said, "Oh, because this went from this name to that name, then he needs to apply for a brand new gravel permit from scratch."
No, we're trying, we're trying to figure that out.
Oh, okay.
But what it is, is it looks like the permits are expired.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, and that was, actually my next question is, so the feet, well, I didn't wanna say the name. The Brimfield Road gravel pit, is that permit valid or not valid anymore?
We're still checking into that.
Okay.
Because it depends on when they were actually granted the permit. Um, to check what bylaw actually applied at that time
Oh, okay.
to that particular permit.
Okay.
And that's what Jill's trying to work on and figure out. She's been working on that for a while now.
Oh, okay. But, and then I heard tonight for the first time that you're now state, publicly stating that the building inspector should be doing the gravel site permits and not the planning board.
Yes.
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 So why would 12 years going backwards, the planning board inspect the gravel pits when it's always...
We don't know why it started, but we can correct it.
Okay.
We are working on fixing things, correcting things and moving forward.
The planning board's main function is the use of land
Right.
for the future. If somebody comes and says they wanna put a McDonald's, we'll look into that. But if somebody has a, a farm and, and, and they're doing something wrong, we have no say. We have no power.
Right.
Same with the pits. We, we, I was surprised too, inspecting the pits. And I saw the whole process. I remember the incident you had. But at the end, we can only send a letter saying, "You should do this, this and that." We have no power over it.
To enforce it, you have no power to enforce it.
To enforce it. So who has the power? Building inspector. So then you, the building inspector is the person who should be doing this inspection.
Right, right.
Do the chief of...
But you're not wrong in being there if you're invited.
Yeah. Right, but we really, it should be something.
You can't enforce it, you can't enforce it.
It doesn't make sense, because you know, the planning board looks into the future. Somebody has a farm and wants to put a solar array, oh, that's us.
Right.
But, you know, somebody has a solar array and it, and it's putting beams or something else and somebody doesn't like it, we have no say.
But it's really the new use of the land. That's what it comes down to.
Yeah. I had the discussion with somebody in, in town. They said, "I'm very unhappy with my neighbor because the planning board approved their pool and now the water is coming to me."
Yep, I remember that.
We approve pools?
No, I said, "The planning board doesn't approve pools."
But she was told by the owner of the pool that the planning board approved it.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah.
And that's only the building inspector. We have nothing to do with those, you know, residence and private property.
Right.
It's, it's not our business.
Yeah.
We, we look for the benefit of a new business in town. That, you know, that's the use of land for the planning board. New stuff.
Yep. And the only, the only other thing, if, if, um, yeah, so you, so you, you were present back in September of 2017 in that Brimfield Road gravel pit, obviously.
Yeah, I had to stay outside because he doesn't let me be in his property.
Right, correct. Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of that and I appreciate that. And, and the other thing is you did also understand what happened to me that I was assaulted.
I, well, I, I was, I saw everything from the distance.
Yeah.
You know, like I said, the planning board has no say on those properties. Whatever we tell them to do, technically speaking, sometimes they do it, sometimes they don't. We, we have no police power to tell them, "Look, if you don't do that, we close it."
Right.
We don't, we can't do that. We can suggest, "Look, that hill is too steep. You might, you have to grow it down." That's about it.
Right, 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 right.
We can, we can say, "Here are the bylaws. This is what rules." But yet we can't enforce it. That's the building inspector. She's the chief enforcement officer.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm sure if, if it's really a special permit that transfers, I think it's the occupancy permit. Because once they have occupancy, like the special permit's kinda done.
Yeah.
Right? So what hap, what really transfers is the occupancy permit.
That's true, yeah.
From one owner to another.
I'm not seeing anything in the bylaw, but it's gonna be in...
It could be in Mass General Law.
Well, no, this...
I got the zoning bylaws.
You got the zoning bylaws.
And I don't see anything in here.
But the, the special permit permits the use of that land. And then that use is sold, so, yeah.
Yeah. And the special permit, I mean, if you don't do anything with it, it even expires after two years, so, um... And then when you're done with your special permit, when you've done all the things you need to do, you get an occupancy permit.
Right, yeah, I'm looking at the bylaw. I don't see anything either.
No. So it's probably in Mass General Law that may be some of this, you know?
Yeah, there's nothing here.
We're learning. We're trying to understand this system.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And, you know, work as possible within our capabilities and then, you know, just trying to be good neighbors here. We're all here blowing tears. Should be with our families right now.
Yeah, I don't think anybody on the planning board made any claim that we knew everything.
No.
We're all learning.
Right, no, I understand.
And we wanna do the right thing, that's why we're here.
Yeah. And I just have one more, uh, generic comment if I may, uh, regarding, uh, Copart. I know there's no public hearing, but it's just a generic statement, so. So funny story is, so I'm actually wearing a sweatshirt that's called The Salvage Center from Oxbridge. So I actually worked there for four and a half years as a security guard. And my job was after hours, I were to make sure that no cars show up for people towing things to there. And they were exactly what Copart is today. They were a salvage center where cars come in, they have fires or thefts or damage or whatever. And so, just to make it like two minutes or less. So my role as a security officer was to prevent theft, prevent people from setting cars on fire. And then also, their hours were 7:00 AM. So if you wanted to drop a car off, it was 7:00 AM till, uh, 6:00 PM was the latest. There was no anything in between that. And then my job as a security officer at 6:00 PM, I used to work till 5:00 AM the next morning, was when people would drive up to the front of the property, "Oh, sorry, I'm late. I just came up from Rhode Island. I gotta drop this car off." And I'm like, "Nope, there's a sign." After 6:00 PM, you are trespassing and you have five minutes to leave the property and they were all told to leave. So, so the way they operated was you bring those cars during those hours and there was no exceptions. The other thing that could be helpful as an educational tool is The Salvage Center had their own internal policies through their auctions and websites. One of those policies was if you buy a car here or RV, trailer, or whatever it is, it must be towed away on a flatbed or it's, it's, regardless, it's towed away. They do not allow any driving of vehicles. So how this has connection here is I listen to the scanner 24/7. There are probably two dozen vehicles a day that are driven out of Copart that they just say, "Okay, here's your paperwork. See you later." And they drive out of there with no license plate. They attach a license plate. They have a repair plate. The bumpers are falling off. None of that at The Salvage Center was allowed. If the owner, who was George, who's, he's now retired, like 80 years old, if he would ban anybody, if you took that car around the corner and then you got it and drove it, he would ban that company from ever buying a thing again. That was his policy. Nothing drives. You must tow it. And there were never any problems. Um, the only other thing that I, I would ask the board to check into is there...
Can I say, we, we need to be really careful because the public hearing is closed and we can't take comments, so...
Okay. All right, just, just one last thing. And I would just ask the board to do a public records request for the amount of car fires that have been there. Because there have been at least a dozen or more, or two dozen.
So Mike, we can't take on any new information?
Yeah, no, I understand, so I'm done, thank you.
We have to judge what it is
Yeah, no, I...
that we have right in front of us.
Yeah, okay. All right, my apologies, but I appreciate it.
Close the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
That's why I couldn't let anybody else talk either, so...
All right, sorry about that. Thank you.
No, no, it's okay.
I appreciate it. So we already talked about next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
We got that.
Sorry, next meeting, next meeting is the...
11th of November.
November 8.
8th of November.
8th of November.
How do you know?
It's the one.
8th of November.
Hey, in, uh, comments and concerns, how do you guys think about moving these meetings at 6?
What?
What do you guys think about moving these meetings at 6, so we don't have a 9 o'clock?
I get out of work at 6.
Yeah, I thought, yeah.